Hello. Yes, oh, here we go. Hi there. Can you see me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, I can see you.
We haven't started quite yet.
Okay.
Right on the edge. Is that a hint to get going there? Is that what you're saying, Mark? Given that information, as the...
Are you ready to start?
We are ready.
I will stop this meeting. There we go.
So why alter it to take it over for Jonathan this evening? Let's start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Linda, how are we doing on the minutes? Do we have them or?
It was not in February. You got March.
We have to first swear in.
A motion?
I make a motion to...
Gary.
Gary.
We should have a formal introduction.
Okay. The substitute. He's the alternate and to have him serve on the board tonight.
Right. I'll second it.
Second. Any comments? Vote. Yes.
Okay.
It passes. You're in.
That's a good sign.
So according to the agenda, there is no old business.
Give you the minutes.
Yeah, the March minutes. Anyone have any questions or the March seven minutes? Folks have read them.
Yep.
They seem to be in order.
I wasn't here. I've read the minutes, but I was not here, so I won't vote.
So it leaves it up to the two ladies then to keep this going.
So I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Thank you.
One second.
All right. Any comments? Vote. Do we accept? We have three accepting people, so let's... Let's go. Moving on to old business, there appears to be none. Under new business, we have 11 for three lanes. Shoreline zoning permit reapproval. Is there somebody here who represents 11?
That's me. Yeah.
I knew I'd remembered your face from some time.
About a year ago.
Right. Do you want to tell us what's up?
So we received approval for this project February of 21, and then went ahead and started getting an estimate and trying to track down materials and so forth. And the... Some of the materials were unavailable for a long period of time. The material costs obviously have gone up, which they still are. And the last thing is we started to have some schedule conflicts with the contractor and just decided this was a bad time to be embarking on this project. So we just basically shelved the entire thing. Yep. So I'm just hoping to start that process again. Probably it will be with a new excavator and a new contractor, depending on what the other person is doing now. But I didn't want to do that unless I had your permission to, you know, continue for another period of time.
Very good. Very good. I assume was there a term limit to our...
For one year.
If something had to happen?
Yeah, the permit expired in February, so she's asking to reapprove the permit. No, nothing has changed. And she still has this condition that her excavator contract excavator FDP certified.
Correct.
So but you understand it will probably be with a different excavator and contractor than the one that we filled out the application a year ago.
Obviously, you said certified by DPD.
Sure, yes, and I understood that. Yep.
So nothing has changed on the permit application process from what you had prior?
No. Nope.
With hearing that, I'll make a motion that we move forward following the same guidelines that we had implemented on the previous application. If it's a different contractor, you still have to follow those rules as far as...
Yes, and I'll make sure. Obviously, we have to get our permit. And so in that process, I'll make sure that I am in touch with you and make sure that you are approved of whoever it is that we're using. Yep.
So I make a motion that we renew the prior permit as it stands?
One second.
And we have a second to that motion. Is there any discussion or questions about this project or?
So the septic is part of the plan, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Field is going to be moved, right?
It's going to be the same place. It's the same septic design that we submitted in the initial application.
Okay. All right.
You're all set. Everyone's all set. We have a motion, a second. Those in favor of reapproving, it passes. You're all set.
Thank you so much. I have one question. Does that approval extend a year from this April 4th? Or is it a year from last February when the first expired?
Equal point.
Right, today.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so one other question. Should I stay or should I make my exit?
No, we won't. You can go. We're all set.
Because I'm not that familiar with this format, I'm not sure how to exit. If I just hit myself, will I see something on the top that says leave?
Leave meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just hit the top?
Wherever it says leave meeting.
Oh, I've got it. Perfect. Well, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate the extension, and I will be in touch with you guys every step of the way. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We can't just leave the meeting. We're here. The next item on the agenda is municipal parking lot, shoreline zoning permit, construction of flood wall and riverfront park and stormwater improvements. Are you the presenter or this is the engineer, correct?
Yes. Can I just add that?
Sure.
I envision this is a two-meeting process. First one, get acquainted with the project. They submitted a full application. If you have any questions and you want to take a sidewalk, it's up to you. And then the next meeting, you can take action or request additional.
Is it going to be like a public hearing?
It's up to you. It's not required on the shoreline zone.
Open to your ideas and thoughts.
Well, I don't know. Has there been like a real public discussion of the whole project? It's been going along for a long time, I know, but it was one.
Matt Budka's town manager, at least for a few more days. So there's been quite a bit of public discussion in this project. We've had, gosh, preliminary discussions on the wall going back to 2015, 16. So it's... I don't think anyone would say that they didn't have the opportunity to give their views on it. And most recently, in the last fall, we had a meeting out at Lincoln Theater, and it was very well attended, got a lot of good input there. And now we're at the point where the contractor has finalized the drawings. I was going to say 90, 95% design work. So and that reflects considerable input from citizens over the years. So if the board would like a public hearing, I'm sure we could do that, but I don't know that it's necessary at this point.
Thank you.
We have a presentation for you. My name is John Wegman. I'm with Wright Pierce and Lacey Kramer. I'm also with Wright Pierce, and she's one of our engineers and working on the project. Again, I realize this is probably the first time this project's been in front of you, but so we wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the overall project and show you what the plan is and certainly entertain any questions you might have. As Matt had mentioned, we are, you know, the design is pretty well evolved and has evolved over the last couple of years. Currently, we're into, you know, we've got it pretty much designed. We've submitted permits to FEMA to alter the flood plane as a result of the project. And we're also preparing, we've got a permit into Army Corps of Engineers for the wetlands. Wetland impacts, again, the wetland impacts have to do with the... It has to do with the riprap embankment that's there. And we're also finalizing our DEP permits for the wetlands as well. So this was one other permit that we needed to get in order to move forward with the project. Overall, the goal of the project is to remove a portion of the downtown parking lots in the backs of several buildings from the 100-year flood plain with this project and also to provide some enhancements for both stormwater, the parking lot, and the waterfront park area. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lacey, and she'll run you through our presentation. You can see it up here.
So I'm... Can't see that. So this project has quite a few components, three of which, two of which are complete and one is in progress. Those are the public restrooms that were already approved through the shoreline zoning permit, as well as the EV charging station, and then some sewer improvements that are nearly complete. And the next portions of it are the flood protection, the storm drain and electrical improvements. The parking lot will be resurfaced. There'll be some pedestrian enhancements that I'm going to go through. And then the Riverside Park will get redeveloped, and living shoreline components will be added to that riprap wall to get some greenery that goes kind of all the way down to the toe of that slope. As you can see, here is just an overview of where the project area is. The wall will kind of run between where that park is and where the edge of the parking lot is. And that wall will really help to protect that downtown area in event of floods in the future. It will also be able to take all of those buildings that are downtown out of the flood plain. And that will really help with some of the financial costs of paying flood insurance, which is often tied to a mortgage. So here's just a small clipping of your shoreline zoning map showing where the project is. It's in a commercial shoreline zoning area. The wall has been designed to meet CLOMAR standards. A CLOMAR is a conditional letter of map revision with FEMA. And those maps tell communities what kind of flood insurance is required on buildings in the area. The barrier is shown on that map there, and it will... The green part there is a temporary barrier that'll get rolled out in event of a flood. The blue parts are where there'll be a wall. There'll be some visibility panels to continue the visual, the visuals of the river from the parking lot area. And then there's a vehicular opening for the boat ramp and some pedestrian openings.
Um, okay. Just a little confusing, but...
There'll be...
The elevation of the top of the wall along the bay and the street. What is?
What do you mean wall height 13.1?
It's 13.1 feet NAVD 88. So that's your elevation above sea level based on the national...
It's the benchmark.
You know, it's the benchmark, right?
But the ground surface elevation. Edge of the park, it's around elevation eight. So this will be around five feet tall.
Just clarifies it. The actual, if you look at the tide height, tide table, that's about six feet higher. Okay, it's a different, it's a different way of measuring, okay? So what would be the elevation of the parking lot on a tide table? It'd be about five and a half feet higher. Okay, so there's...
The parking lot presently is five and a half feet.
Well, no. The parking lot is eight feet NAVD 88. That's the way of measurement. If you look at the tide tables, using that type of measurement, the parking lot would be about 13 and a half feet high. Just trying to clarify that there's two different ways of measuring it.
So the simple is the new wall is going to be five and a half feet above the existing parking lot currently?
Right.
Okay, so...
Five feet at the highest.
So where does this three-foot wall come in? I mean, you guys were talking about...
So both at the bridge side tie-in and at the tie-in near Water Street, you're getting down to zero feet. So you're going from zero feet of wall. We're keeping the same height at the top of the wall. But the ground goes lower. So at some points, the wall has to be about five feet tall. And then at other points, it's getting much shorter. It's really, it's not a consistent five-foot wall as you're standing in the parking lot standing next to you. It's really five feet at the lowest points of the parking lot.
Is the... So but at the boat ramp, it's... I mean, that's one of the lowest points. It's going to be five foot?
5.1 feet from the ground to the top of the wall.
Okay, so...
That will also be an open area that will only be filled in with stop log closures in event of a flood.
And it's going to continue along the gully there, you know, or the misery gulch, the gulch? And but not further, not around the kayak shop. What is that green line around the kayak shop?
Actually, if we move this line, we can see some other actual examples of what we're going to use.
Great. Okay.
This gives a little clearer picture of that.
Right, so this shows kind of where we'll have those... The wall, this is a lot of the portion that would be five feet. So what we've done is we've knocked that down a couple of feet, and we're going to add some temporary closures in the event of a flood. And that allows us to get that FEMA certification. Because that's how that 13.1-foot elevation came about, was that was the requirement from FEMA to get the CLOMAR. So hopefully, that'll get a little clearer as we...
What's a visibility panel?
What it is, it's just a, it's...
Here, I'll hop to that side.
...is 13, five feet high, let's say. In certain sections, what we've done is we've cut out pieces of that wall down two feet, so the wall height at that location is only three feet high. So it allows you to look through it, or look over the top of the wall. Five feet is difficult for some people, certainly in a car, to look over the wall. So but in those areas, at the time of flood, there'll be, there's panels that fit into those, into that opening that'll raise the center of the wall height back up to 13.1, so you get your protection.
So that's, you can see those in the photo there. That's an example of a project in Thailand, I think, which just happens to be one of the few places that has used this approach to their flood preparations.
So, okay, I'm just a little confused. So the... You have cutouts every once in a while, down two feet, you know, from the five-foot height. And there's... Is there like a plexiglass panel put in? No.
It's open.
It's open.
It's just open, and then...
You put in stuff.
Right, these metal panels that will go in.
Are they mechanical or do they have to be put in by hand?
They will be put in by hand by the fire department.
So they're going to be stored down there, right?
They will be stored in a vehicle trailer that's stored on the fire department's property.
Yeah, one of the things that we had to prepare for FEMA was a whole plan on how we install these stop logs in the openings. Because there's, as Lacey had mentioned, there's openings of the boat ramp that goes down to the existing grade. There's pedestrian access points and two other locations in the wall that go down to, you know, so you can walk through the wall, obviously. And in those areas, we'll have to put stop logs up five feet. And in those open, the view panels, as we're calling them, we'll put stop logs in those view panels as well, the last two feet. Now, one of the things that, one of the other things to note is that the 13.1 elevation, that five-foot elevation, obviously, you folks know or familiar with the parking lot. You know that it floods periodically from water coming back up through the system and flooding the parking lot. If we look at what the, what those king tides flood elevations are, it's around elevation seven, I think, six or seven. And so this is significantly higher than that. What we needed to look at in designing the wall is we needed to take into account sea level rise as well as wave run-up from the fetch area that's in front of that. If the waves were running, or if the wind was blowing in the correct direction, waves would come up as well as a freeboard, an additional safety factor above that. So that's how we got to 13.1. It's not, and also the 100-year flood elevate or elevation in the river and all these compounding effects, that's how we got to that elevation. So it's not, you know, it's based on all these different factors that we had to account for, as well as sea level rise.
What is the sea level rise that you're anticipating or that you're designed for?
We have to manage to the 2050 sea level rise is we're committing to manage to a foot and a half of sea level rise between now and 2050. And the wall has the ability to be added on to in the future height-wise. So the sea level rise, I believe for the 2100, is 3.9 feet or something like that.
And the 100-year flood elevation is 10 feet. Just for some context of how high the wall might be compared to that flood elevation, is it's three feet above that.
And you may talk about this later in the presentation, but is the parking lot being built up itself?
It's not in general. There's just areas that we're building up a little bit or whatever, but we'll get into the parking lot in a moment. But one of the things that we did as part of our overall design work here, we conducted a geotechnical investigation looking at the soils underneath the parking lot. And what we found is there's, you know, there's some gravels that were dumped there in the 60s to create the parking lot, but they were put basically on relatively soft clay soils. And the problem with those soils is that they'll settle, and they're not very strong in terms of... So if we were to add several feet of gravel onto the parking lot to raise the elevation of the parking lot, those soils would start to settle. So all your pipes that are out there, you've got several sewer lines, you've got storm drain lines, other things would also then settle. And so they would not, they wouldn't function as they do currently today. So you really can't just raise the elevation of the parking lot without taking that into consideration.
And the reason I ask that is because currently, when there's a high tide now, water comes up through the storm drain now and the parking lot floods, so this isn't going to prevent that.
Yes, it will. So...
Okay. Okay.
Keep moving forward. So this is the cross-section of what the wall will be. It'll be a sheet pile wall that's driven down to bedrock with a concrete cap, and that'll stop the water from coming in underground of the parking lot, which could have, could cause issues if the flood waters were up here. You know, water could go under. So this has been the solution to stop that. And then the concrete wall will have some form liners with some decorative patterns.
Sorry, can you back up one? So the red line is essentially a solid wall that's going to be going down through that, front of that whole parking lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a sheet pile wall that goes right down to, almost to the bedrock or just about to the bedrock.
What do you estimate in depth there?
It's 20 to 25 feet in places.
And then here, here are some more images of those flood barriers. In this case, they're being used around a building. But these really were the most economical option available. They deploy in an hour or so per maybe 10x5 section. So they'd be stored by, you know, two people. So it depends on what kind of a crew will be set up for this. But they'll be stored in a trailer, either at the fire department or at the town facility, and lovely deployed in event of a flood, just based on the National Weather Service's flood watch and flood warning notifications. And we've been in the discussion with them about how to make sure that Damerskotta and the surrounding areas have the best notifications available. So here, again, are those images of where, what it might look like where the wall is lower. This is a photo that we've just kind of added some wall sections on to. And this would be the pedestrian opening where that entrance gate to the park is going to be.
And that's where those planks would go if they needed to be put in place?
Exactly.
So are you thinking planks or steel?
Well, they are stop logs. They're aluminum planks, essentially.
So they're aluminum. Okay.
And then this is an image of the temporary barrier that we're expecting to use between the end of the wall, kind of at the end of Misery Gulch, all the way to the bridge. And these can be rolled out and zipped together. And that'll just kind of connect the end of the full barrier to where the elevation of the road starts to really match that FEMA flood requirement.
And through that area, obviously, it's the entrance to the parking lot. We couldn't put any hard barrier through there. And this seemed like the best alternative. And so it's readily deployable, very easy, and it's not too large. I mean, it's units themselves. They come in segments, and so you can pick them up and handle them.
So then, in connection with the wall, in event of a flood, there's also water that would fall if it was raining inside of the wall. And as the parking lot is now, the water sheet flows off of the parking lot towards the river. So in order to prevent flooding internal to the wall, we have added two new things to the parking lot. One, our monodirectional outfalls. So water will no longer be able to go back up the stormwater outfall pipes that currently they back up through during king tides. So that'll be prevented by those, by those kind of backflow prevention filters or valves. And then an underground stormwater storage tank. And that will provide some storage during 100-year flood when the water is above the outfalls, so the water can't continue to leave because the water is being blocked by the flood.
I thought that they had already put stop valves, retrofitted the out, you know, the pipes under the drains, under the parking lot with stop valves, but they weren't working. I mean, are these going to work?
There was a project completed about three years ago that would have, that would have done a lot of these parking lot improvements without, not the storage piece, but they would put the monodirectional outfalls or valves on the ends of all the outlet pipes so that in the event that the water in the river got high enough, they wouldn't flow back into the parking lot.
But it never was done?
That was never done. No. It was right around the time that we decided to pursue the fundings for this larger project in the wall. So that, you know, that would have prevented during, you know, king tides and other high tide events, would have prevented flooding of the parking lot during those events. But it would not have, once the water reaches the, you know, the top of the embankment, it would not have prevented any other flooding. Embankment, it would not have prevented any other flooding.
Uh, so in addition to the underground storage, um. Filters will be added to the catch basins to prevent sediment from and oils from reaching the river. Um, just to kind of protect the health of that area. Um, as well as some some new storm drain lines. Um, there'll also be some improvements along Water Street with um.
Storm.
Storm drainage, just new catch basins and and storm drain lines.
So. The drainage in town, the street drainage, where does it, where does, does it all get? Is it, it's, it doesn't get directed into the sewer, it's just gets directed into the river, right?
Now, the drainage from Main Street.
Yeah.
In that segment, when DOT did their project several years ago, they put a new collection system in Main Street and discharged it. On the north side of the bridge, um, where where.
Where the Lower East Office is.
Yeah, yeah, in that area, so that's where that water drains to. And then um, there are catch basins on Water Street that currently uh, one or two of them drain down an outlet. Um, along the embankment of the entrance driveway. Uh, and then there's another one that goes across through some private property that drains out, we're going to collect those and then discharge them uh, on the town property. Out into the uh, out into the river. And then all the other internal drainage, now the storage system is going to be normally empty. When you, when you do have a high tide event, an exceptionally high tide event and the water can't drain, if you have a rain event at the same time. Water may not be able to drain out through the pipes because the water in the river may be too high. So what what happens then is the water will be will be diverted into the underground storage tanks, they'll also fill up. And uh, as the tide recedes, those will then be able to drain and drain out. So this is just to present, prevent surface drainage, um, you know, from the pipes to uh, so you won't get any internal flooding caused by rainfall events.
How big are those tanks?
They're uh.
Thirty-eight thousand square feet, cubic feet.
So is it the entire dark gray shaded area is the?
That's about a three foot deep area that are underneath the parking lot, that's that's uh, storage.
Isn't the Paul Bingham Gale Tank like?
No, it's, this is all on town property.
So in addition to the storm drain improvements, um, the existing utility poles are. Exactly where the proposed wall is located, so um. We have a proposal here to reroute the utility lines underground, which also will help with kind of the attractiveness of the. The area, um, those utility poles are kind of big and bold center of of the uh, view to the river. Um, we've discussed this with CMP and Tidewater, so the solution is that there'll be a new utility pole kind of between the restroom and um. What used to be Oliver's Print Shop, um. And just rerouting all the rest of those utilities underground. Um, there'll also be some some lighting improvements throughout the park as well as down one of the centers of the the parking areas.
I mean, we don't want to. Increase, you know, the light pollution on the river because of habitat issues. And that's a really big concern.
Yeah.
Is we don't want like light pollution, we don't want this, you know, huge glowing. Park.
That's the first time I've heard that concern.
It's a big, big concern of all the aquaculturists and everybody on the river.
I mean, certainly what what can happen is or what can be done is the the control of those lights in the parking lot can be on timers. So that they don't, you know, they don't, they don't on throughout the entire night. Um, the the lighting in the park area is more scaled towards pedestrians, pedestrian use of that area. You know, we can certainly look at that and and maybe scale that back uh, if necessary, it's not tall lighting. There is though, right now currently the lights, there are lights located on the poles that are right between the the parking lot and the park, they're on that. That edge there, we're moving the poles in another forty feet or so, forty or fifty feet inside into the internal part of the parking lot. And there'll be what they'll light the parking lot, we can certainly look at the lighting levels, make sure that they aren't something that. Uh, is going to, I mean, the effect of those poles on the river itself, there would be relatively little light pollution there in terms of actual light hitting the ground. Whether or not having a light pole, you know, up here that maybe this, the light source may be visible from the water itself. Uh, because you're looking, you know, you're looking up up towards the light, even though they're full cut off fixtures, so there won't be, you know, there won't be any light pollution going up.
We just, it just has to be really carefully.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that, that's, like I said, that's the first time I've heard that concern, but.
And one of, you know, you talked about catch basins and filters and stuff. I mean, this is a major oyster, you know, aquaculture river, like the most important.
And there's currently no treatment on the parking lot at all, all the water is flowing straight into the river. And so adding those treat, those filters to the catch basins. Um, is a really important way, it's not, it's not mandated by any permit, it's not required by the DEP, it's something that. Um, the town has expressed to us is very important to this project to have, help improve the health of the river. Um.
I just, you know, there just needs to be a maintenance plan.
Absolutely.
With it and.
And we can send you the operation and maintenance plan that we created uh, that we sent to FEMA, it wasn't part of the standard application requirements for the shoreline.
Buy in by the town that they're going to do it.
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Well, and also, yeah, from a stormwater perspective, that's certainly something that the towns bought into uh, in terms of maintenance.
So so what about snow removal? I mean, right now they just push it, you know, off the brit, by the bridge, you know, into the water, um, is it, okay?
There's, there's two planes for uh, the snow removal or. The dumping of the snow into the river that are authorized by DEP, one is the Howard and Bowie lot. Uh, that's for the the Main Street and North area, and then for the parking lot, it's the launch area. There is, there's no other, I don't know if they, if they follow this to the letter of the permit, but there are no other authorized places to dump snow.
Yeah.
And those will continue. And currently, there's a there's a guardrail along that, uh, the most of that length of the parking lot, between the parking lot and the park, so. I mean, currently, I'm sure from I I, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think that they push snow directly because of the guardrail. Over into uh, into the river from the parking lot directly, it has to go through the launch area.
What, they actually dump it into the river at the launch area? I've never seen like a big.
For the parking lot itself, I think that's what they do, like Matt said, and then like all the Main Street goes down.
Yeah, I've seen that.
But the parking lot itself all goes towards the boat ramp and then they push it into the boat ramp.
I mean, that's, it's just a source of pollution, but unless we had a a designated place to to put it all and have it slowly melt, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
Okay, from the river, but.
Would be a huge expense. You have to truck that snow out of downtown. So we're fortunate that we have uh, the DEP permit and they monitor us, make sure we comply with the uh. Uh, the trash pickup and the the priority for for no use of seeing.
It'd be really great to have. A real visual mockup of this, so people really could get an idea of what it looked like, do you, do you have that as we go through? No, see these?
Yeah.
Don't necessarily, okay.
Um, and here I can give you a copy of the plans right now, if you'd like to take a look, it's also in the permit, um, application.
Yeah, we included it, but all these plans are from our permit application.
So so the wall is is on the parking lot side of the park, right?
Yeah, it's right on that, yeah, it's on the on the dividing line and the wall itself is a is a two or two and a half foot wide. Uh, concrete wall, so it's it's not like a thin, a real thin line, it's it's a fairly, uh, it's a substantial.
Roughly start at the end of the pavement now and the grass, kind of, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, the parking lot really can't afford to lose much space there because, yeah, as you may know, it already feels very tight. So we, we're not taking any space away from the park.
What do you have for a guess of the distance from the backside of the wall to like the edge of the riprap?
I think that is going to be, we've, we've got accurate survey and laid it all out, so we've got, it varies.
Hmm.
It's it's up to about fifteen feet, I think, is what we, is what we've shown. And part of the improvements, and I don't want to take any lacy thunder away, but. Um, in terms of, uh, one of the, one of the benefits that we're trying to to do here is we're trying to create a living shoreline, so. The existing riprap is on a slope, what we're trying to do is maybe in some places, make that slope a little bit steeper and then cre- also create some. Some spaces for um, plantings uh, along the shoreline itself. Because right now it's just rocks right straight down to the shoreline. And it's, you know, we're trying to create pockets where we can put plantings and and help. Uh, you know, soften in terms of the environmental impact of of a riprap wall right down to the water. Um, so that's one of the, one of the components of this project that we're we're trying to incorporate. You know, if it um, we really can't afford to move the whole wall over and and put vegetation in front of it because then we have no park space. Fifteen feet is a relatively narrow space already and that, you know, it's a narrow park and we're trying to do some, add some interest there as well, some enhancements to the park itself.
So what kind of vegetation?
Well, we, why don't you answer that, you probably have a better handle than that.
Yeah, so there's um, low marshes really everywhere that's under your general mean high water line and so that, that ends up being a lot of um, salt marsh grass. And then as you move further up into the park area, you get into that maritime upland and high marsh plateau area. Um, and on the plans, there's a plant listing, um. But some of those are some blueberry bushes and some some other plants that really kind of thrive in that occasionally salty water. Um, when it, when it reaches them.
And they're all native plants to me.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how how you can introduce substrate for these plants to survive in that.
It's going to be challenging, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
So I'm I'm a little bit of a visual person and I guess my question is, do you have any kind of a model that you've built or put together that kind of?
We've put together plans that hold, show them in in plan view as well as, there's a number of cross sections in the plan set that we incorporated with our. Um, application, um, I don't know if you were able to download the application or not, but that's a fairly large file. So, um, in any event, what we've done is we've, is we've, um, first of all, we took a very accurate survey. Uh, of the existing shoreline area, the park area, the parking lot. Um, so that we could, we could construct a model in our CAD system, you know, actually model it in three D. And then, we then looked at opportunities to to stack stones differently so that we could create these vegetated areas. So there's not one continuous strip, there's pockets and some of the pockets may be down low and some of the pockets may be up a little bit higher. Um, that, just to be able to create those pockets and opportunities to introduce vegetation into that slope. So that's, that's what we've done, um, and the, you know, this year, the plan that we have up right now. Um, kind of shows you in plan view and a couple of the cross sections, we do have quite a few more, you know, you can see all the different cross section lines. That we've done just to kind of be able to construct it too and when it comes time to construct it, to be able to give direction as to how and how it's to be constructed.
I guess, I mean, I, I agree with you, I mean, this is, this. This is what where we always run into to problems, you know, on the planning board, and we have these beautiful detailed. Um, drawings, you know, and cross sections and everything, but it doesn't really. Show you what it's going to look like, you know, from the parking lot, we need a computer model, I mean. Isn't there somebody like really clever in your office who can can use? You know. Not Google Earth, SketchUp or something, you know, to, to do a, like a three D. Model of this. We should be able to walk along the wall and say, oh, look, there's the.
It's not required in code, but you know, and I.
But what I'm saying is, I I know, I, but it it's not required, but it it sure would, would, would. Make people less nervous about this project, there's a lot of, people are nervous about this project, you know? And and if if people really understood it.
There's a lot of effort that goes into something like that.
Yeah.
And it's not like there's a big developer behind us saying we're going to, we want to sell this project based on that.
I mean, could the high school do it?
I mean.
You know, could we get link kids at Lincoln?
That's, that really isn't practical, I mean, what they've done is, uh, I mean, you can see the cross sections up there, there's, there's maybe eight of them. And uh, in what what we sent you included all those cross sections, it shows. What, what the uh, what the profile is in each location. And then it gives a key to what vegetation is going to be planted. Now, I, you know, I'll tell you Jenny, I don't think I've had one person. It's, have we had anyone that?
That what?
That are concerned about the the plantings?
No, not the plantings, I don't care about the planting, I'm concerned about the elevation of the wall, I mean, look at it, it's over the the the. The top of the car there, I mean, it's just, it's.
Well, I mean, the wall, that height is the height.
I know, it is the height, but but, and and when I look at the cutaways and, you know, the pedestrian access. Um, I, access points, I feel relieved, you know what I mean, that it's not this huge. Barrier, you know?
Right.
Um, but.
I mean, that's, you know, it certainly can be done, um, currently, we don't have it in our scope or our budget to be able to do that.
So much work is being put into this project, I want it to succeed.
Yes.
And I want people to to like it.
But the the bottom line is the, that's the height of the wall, I mean, we've got. That's what the application's in, that's the required height in order to take the downtown out of the flood zone. Uh, and to protect downtown from sea level rise, I mean. We could lower the hall, the the wall and then we, and then what happens with sea level rise in ten or twenty years, I mean, it's a fine balance, but. Uh, I remember at the public meeting we had at Lincoln School, it was applause and congratulations.
Uh, yeah, and I and I do, I understand, it's going to change what is down there currently. Currently, the, there's a, there's, like I meant, had mentioned, there's the guardrail and that's about two and a half or or so feet tall. When we first started out this project, you know, we, before we did all the analysis to figure out how tall this wall, we were talking, you know, three. Feet maybe and and I know we got a lot of pushback from that, you know, when we came up with the thirteen point one. Um, and so we've tried hard to uh, have or create these visual, these visual view corridors in the wall, so. It'll kind of soften the impact of the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on that, on that view from the parking lot, the buildings themselves are, you know, will look over that wall for the most part. You know, most of the buildings that are, that are on Main Street that that face out that way, uh, Main Street's up several feet higher, obviously. Um, so I'm not saying that, you know, you won't notice it, but it will be less noticeable, certainly from those, the backs of those buildings. But from the parking lot itself, you will notice.
What's the length of that wall, do you know?
I think it's, I want to say seven hundred feet, but.
How many lookouts do you have in that seven hundred?
Yeah, well, we're showing three and they're like eighty foot long openings in that wall. Now, keep in mind that as you approach Water Street, the height of the wall reduces because the grain comes up. And it's, it certainly stops at the end, at Misery Gulch, at the end of Misery Gulch, then it stops there as well. So we have one view panel that looks out over the Misery Gulch and we have two v- view panels, one on either side of that central pedestrian access. Um, uh, looking out onto the river.
So a third of that wall is going to be looked through, roughly?
Yeah. And plus you'll have. You'll now, you'll have the thirty foot opening for the uh, the boat launch, the twenty, one of the, one of those pedestrian openings in the center will be twenty feet wide. Um, so you know, you start to add another thirty feet to that, so.
Well, Jenny, I know you prefer a three dimensional, which, you know, there are, and I understand that. Uh, I think we should move on.
Okay.
With, you know, your presentation and see what else, so.
With, you know, your presentation and see what else you're gonna share with us.
So, um, this is a, a rendering from the, the landscape architect of what the park entrance could look like. They were kind of discussing some, some river and dam or Scotta themed options here.
And this goes at the entrance of the parking lot right by the meat market?
No, this is right in the center of the, uh, the center of the wall.
Oh, 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 I got you.
Taco alley down.
Taco alley down, exactly.
And then I think we discussed the living shoreline. And then I just wanted to kind of run through what other permitting processes we've been going through. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection has a pretty significant permit that we've been pulling together. And that's, that's in the process. We've just got a couple of pieces left before that goes in. The FEMA permitting is that conditional letter of map provision and the funding from the EDA is tied to that. So that has already gone in and it was a pretty thorough permitting process. We had to create an operation and maintenance manual that, that really went into not just the maintenance of the wall and the storm drain pieces, but what happens in event of an emergency? Who's responsible for deciding when there's an emergency, how that decision is made? Who needs to arrive on site and with what materials and really making sure that, that this process and this wall is taken care of appropriately and, and functions when it's necessary. There is provisions for annual practices to make sure that the wall works where folks will come out and install all of the pieces, make sure nothing's missing, everything's in good condition. That's when you can do your inspections and decide what maintenance needs to be done. And that way, you know, it's not like we buy all this stuff, build the wall. And then ten years from now, there's a flood coming and everybody that was involved in the projects retired, right? So this is really an ongoing process and that document is a living document that requires signatures and annual checks that all of the phone numbers are correct. And it's really a thorough process that, that is required of this wall to get FEMA approval. And the last piece is the Army Corps Permit, which is a a pre-construction notification. So that's a, a much smaller permit than the other two, but that's been applied for already.
One thing I'd like to do is move back to the walkways that were some of the pedestrian enhancements. There was a slide, I think we may have skipped over.
There we go.
So that, on this slide here, it also, one of the other components of the project is, is trying to improve the pedestrian access to the parking lot and the, and the river, and the park as well. And so on the left-hand side, you've got the, there's some enhancements we're doing to Taco Alley in terms of creating a paver walkway through there and then demarking a pedestrian walkway through the parking lot to that central entrance to the, to the park. And then from Water Street, currently there are no sidewalks on that entrance. Looking at creating a sidewalk along the south side of that entrance, of, of that entrance drive that'll take you down towards, towards the park and you can get into the park that way from Water Street or the parking lot itself. So those are two other component, that's another component of this, of this particular plan is to enhance the pedestrian accessibility to that area.
So are the, are the planks for the wall? And I think you mentioned this, are they metal or are they?
They're aluminum planks.
They're aluminum?
Yeah, and they have a gasket on one side of it. So as they go down, they'll seal each other up and they just stack these planks. They're either six, you can get them either six inches high or twelve inches high.
So in terms of necessity, if ten years down the road, the water level began to rise or there were issues, it would be, we would be in a position where we could buy additional.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. These are, these are fairly available, you know, systems and so forth. You can, you can, again, the wall is gonna be designed, so it's designed for the thirteen point one. In the future, if that wall needed to be higher, we could, you know, you could design on top to go on top of that.
And the stop logs are often used to retrofit buildings that are buildings or, or flood prone areas that are, have already been built to protect from flooding that's, that's occurring, so.
What's the height difference between the bridge and the parking lot? So if the water gets to your five foot mark, is it gonna matter? Is it already running over the bridge and coming in the parking lot?
No, the, the parking lot is, I mean, the bridge itself is, is just over thirteen feet. So it, it's, if we go to the, why don't we go to the overhead, one of the, the big aerial shot maybe? Very beginning.
I, I actually, I, I think that, right, if the wall, if the water was high enough that it was overtopping the wall, it would be just about overtopping the bridge over here as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that thirteen point one, it's not saying the water actually is gonna reach that elevation. Still water elevation won't be at thirteen point one.
Right.
That, that accounts for wave run-up. So you've got waves coming in as well as, you know, a freeboard above that. So, you know, we have to protect to that level just because that's what FEMA wants. They want to make sure you're, you're protected. Especially if they're gonna take you out of the flood plain.
Just had to ask, cause it was, I would be the guy that was still around here and they'd say, well, you were sitting on that board and the water's coming over the bridge running in the parking lot. Well, they're doing us a damn bit of good, so.
So, so the, the, um, what do they call that building? By, at the end of Misery Gulch?
This one.
The, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, Alan's. So that, that won't be out of the flood plain, because everything will be going around it, right?
We looked, we, as part of the project, we looked at different ways to include that within the, within the flood barrier area and it, there's, there's too many complicating, or, or it's just not possible to be able to include them.
Cause it's on, I mean, a lot of these buildings, but that one in particular are on piers. I mean, they were, water used to just come up to the back.
Yeah, actually that one there, talking to Alan, they had done a project there where they, where they did raise the building, brought in fill underneath that and then poured a large basically footing around the perimeter of the building and set it back down. And because of that, the foundation doesn't go down into the ground very far and everything else. There's a lot of water movement or potential for water movement underneath the building. And that really, we could set a wall on top of that, a temporary wall, but if the water would come up underneath that wall and, and compromise the rest of the parking lot.
Okay.
So that really, really couldn't, it wasn't a good way of being able to protect that building.
And, and on the other side of the main street?
That's correct. There's the.
What, I mean, it, will, will it come up? You know, back there or?
There, there is a, a portion of that parking lot, the, that is in the back there, the old Damaskot Savings Parking Lot, that.
Flood plane comes right up through here.
Okay.
In the back.
Yeah.
How far up that Gulf from the boat lamp ramp towards Alan's building? How far does that new wall go?
But, well, the temporary wall would go up around.
Yep, but the cement wall, the cement wall goes to how far, Matt?
And, and.
Right to there, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Trying to point at it.
How are we doing? Have you said it?
Yeah, any, anything else, any other questions? I mean, are there things that you want us to address? We can certainly try to address the, the lighting issue that you brought up. If, if there's other issues, then we'd certainly be happy to do it.
If I could comment on, on the lighting. The lighting that's there now is part of our LED lighting network. And I can control the brightness of the lights from my computer.
Okay.
So if, if there are concerns that they're too bright, we can, we can turn it down.
And the new lights will be added to that, Matt?
And then the existing lights are, are here.
Right.
And so what we'll be doing is moving them back this way. So they'll be further away from the park. And the, the lights that were through the park are really kind of landscape lights. I mean, very small.
That's what I was gonna ask. If there was gonna be something out there like a little bullet light or something that.
There'll be, yeah, it'll be pedestrian scale lighting.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly appreciate your thoroughness. Very, very detailed, very informative.
I think this project for a couple of years and we're happy to talk about it. So appreciate your interest and your questions.
And sorry, I, I haven't looked through all of that download yet. Is there a drawing in there of a finished drawing of what it would look like when it's all said and done?
You mean elevation?
Um, no, just overall.
We have site plans that show what the final site plan is going to look like. As well as this landscape plans that show, you know, the work in, in the park and the shoreline areas. Those are all detailed out. Like, like I said, we've got those cross sections. We have details for, you know, all the storage system and so forth, the, the storm grain.
I was just thinking of like something similar to this, but an aftershot of what you envisioned and it looked like.
That's, I mean, we can, that's getting towards Jenny's question there too, whether or not we can do some sort of a rendering or.
So it's, and similar to this photo here. Uh, there, I have a couple more that I've drawn, done my best to draw to scale. Kind of what that wall would look like and I can send that to you guys, but it isn't necessarily.
Where we've taken a photo and, you know, put, you know, drawn.
I mean, that's helpful.
We can certainly.
Yeah, I, I can provide that to you guys. Sorry. I was trying to click on it, but.
Good point.
Very good.
Yeah, it, it's a quite a project. Yeah, it's amazing. So what is the timeframe? Possible timeframe on this?
Right now, the timeframe is largely dependent upon permitting, for the wetlands permitting. The wetlands permitting have to deal with the, the work we're doing on that riprap slope. And again, from an environmental perspective, there's, there's very little impact there, but nonetheless, but because we're working within the intertidal zone, we need to get a wetlands permit. Currently, they've told us a hundred and twenty days, I believe, is what they anticipate their turnaround. So that's driving the schedule. So we really can't go out to bed until we get that and as well as all the other permits. So that seems to be the one on the, yeah, that's the one on the critical path, so to speak.
And just to clarify, so there are higher expectations and we've tried to stress this, that right now we have about two and a half million available for the project. And given the construction prices that we've been seeing over the last year, it may not be possible to do the entire reconstruction parking lot, the drainage and the wall. So we're gonna be having it in, potentially in two different phases, two different major phases. Hopefully, when the, as soon as DEP has their permit, our permit finalized, we'll be able to go out for bids. And the plan would be FY twenty-three. Be like the spring of twenty-three and then in the fall of twenty-three, we could do the, the parking lot reconstruction with the drainage, which is the biggest problem we face now is that drainage issue. And the pedestrian walkways using Taco Alley and then the new sidewalk up to, to Water Street. So that would be the first phase. And then more than likely, we're gonna need to seek some additional funds from the Economic Development Administration to get that, that second phase done, the wall done. But what they said is, my contact at EDA talked with his supervisors and they want us, even though we can't do the whole, we may not be able to do the entire project at one time. They say, go ahead, get bids for the reconstruction of the parking lot, the drainage system, the pedestrian access, and then go forward on that actual construction. And, and then we can go back later. If there weren't enough funds for the wall, go back and apply for an addendum to our, our grant project. So I guess the, the bottom line is hopefully next year, we're gonna see a lot of progress made on the, the parking lot and drainage system. But then we're probably looking at least two years, maybe three years out for the balance of the project.
So the parking lot reconstruction, is it all gonna be dug up?
It will have to be dug up. We're gonna have to do a heck of a lot of work on phasing that construction to minimize the impact on the businesses. And the thought is that we would time the construction for spring and the fall. And then is, as, as we have to use up parking spaces, first of all, encourage the employers down there, the, the businesses to find alternate parking for their employees, because that's what tends to take a lot of, a lot up now. And then maybe some type of shuttle bus system from, from other locations. So it's gonna be an impact. I know several of you will probably hear during the major sidewalk construction and, and even though I was, I started here a long after that, I was still hearing complaints about what it took to, to build the, the mainstream sidewalk. So we're gonna do everything we can to, to minimize the impact on businesses. But I think the benefits far outweigh the, the inconvenience.
Would you do half and half, Matt, or is that too aggressive?
Maybe a third, a third, a third, depending on, you know, how, how it, it breaks down with the, with the drainage system. Basically, that's gonna be the main factor there. A lot of work.
Okay, how are we doing with our questions? Satisfied in terms of our understanding?
I am. Sure.
So you will be sending some, some visuals? Visual visuals?
It will be a, a computerized render. I can send some, some mockups that I've created.
What you're looking at in terms of the parking lot, it's still gonna be blacktop asphalt with additional light fixtures in there and the pedestrian walkway. The major changes will be seen, seen on that little strip of park. I don't know that it would have been worthwhile for us to do a, a three-dimensional model.
Yeah.
For that. And anyone who would like to come down and visualize with me or the engineers, what's gonna go where, would be happy to do that.
I'm always happy.
I, I'm gonna bring my little, my little drawing down to the parking lot and just.
Do you wanna do a site visit?
I think we probably should.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anytime.
No, I'm sorry, anytime.
Next week. I can't do it the rest of this week, but I'll be, I'll be back on the eleventh and can do it anytime after that, but.
How does the twelfth look for you folks?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twelfth at four?
Tuesday, the twelfth at four, sounds good.
Yeah, that's good for me. So they're not gonna like dig out a bunch of the parking lot and put in new crushed rock, you know, really re.
They, they are gonna.
They are gonna do that?
I have samples in my office here, but the, the asphalt is two inches deep now. It's on very porous.
Right.
That's gonna, it's gonna be rebuilt. And you know, one thing, one of the selectmen asked is that we look at, you know, not only the gravel base, a blue gravel base, but four inches of asphalt.
Okay.
It can hold the trailer trucks that go through there.
You know, when they rebuilt the Rising Tide parking lot, it was an extraordinary amount of money that they spent on it. But they did an incredible job. I've never seen a parking lot reconstructed like. But they did an incredible job. I've never seen a parking lot reconstructed like that. They went down four feet and.
And that's the thing, you, you can put six inches of hot top on that back parking lot, not do nothing underneath it. It's not going to last.
It's not going to last.
You need to dig that out and put a decent base in.
Yeah.
And take care of the drainage issues and then you can get away with lesser amount of hot top, but it's the base that drives the whole thing.
Yeah, it's just, and, and I, and I feel like sometimes some of the sidewalks around town didn't have a good base, you know, just. Anyways.
That's correct.
What date? Is that a good date for you? Okay. Tuesday, April 12th, 4:00 PM.
Okay, great. Thank you guys so much.
Yes, thank you.
My only question, Bob, is where we do, and, and I get we don't have to, but should we just say at our next meeting, we're going to have a public hearing on this. We can't say that it, it wasn't out there for one of our planning board meetings. If there's nobody shows up, then we move on to our next phase as it is. But I think it would benefit us if we just said that we were going to do it same as we do with the other projects.
We'll schedule for the next week.
Sounds good.
And, and notice of this site visit will be in the paper, right?
Put that in the paper. It'll be on the website. We can't get it in.
They'll put it in the paper.
Oh, okay. For free, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Well, I think that concludes your part. I don't know. What, is there anything on the agenda that Bob has in his hip pocket? Given all that information, I think it's time to listen to a motion. Carry us away from here.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
A second. Then a second by Ann and all in favor. And we did it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.